Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order if you would join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you all, have a seat. Thanks for not taking a knee. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce to you our newest mayor, newest member of county councilor, Mayor Robert Reed from the United Townships of Head Claret Mariah. His papers have been filed with the county of Renfrew Clark. And Mr. Reed, if you'd like to join us at the front to take the oath of office.
As a member of the council and corporation of the county of Renfrew, I do solemnly promise and declare that on behalf of the county of Renfrew, I will truthfully, truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward for a promise thereof for the exercise of this office is based corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any peculiary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen the Second. I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as it made under oath.
And now I would like to invite the acting mayor of Greater Madawaska, Brian Hunt, to join us as a temporary member of county council. And Brian, I invite you to come and say your oath of office. Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
We have a resolution from the Township of Greater Madawaska that reads as follows: Whereas council pursuant to section 267.1 of the municipal act 2001, C25, aims and adviseful to name an alternate member to the upper tier of the municipality in order to protect and promote the interests of the Township of Greater Madawaska by providing effective representation of the county's inventory. Therefore, we have resolved that council appoints Council Brian Hunt in effect of September 25th, 2017, as representative for the Township of Greater Madawaska at the county of Renfrew Council to act in place of Mayor McKay until Mayor McKay is able to resume acting as a member of the county's under the order of the term until it comes first.
So can I get a mover and a seconder? Councillor Eamonn, Councillor Packett?
That in accordance with section 267.1 of the municipal act and the resolution from the Township of Greater Madawaska regarding the appointment of an alternate member of county council, in the absence of Councillor McKay, that Brian Hunt, councillor of the Township of Greater Madawaska, be appointed as a member of county council as of September 27th, 2017, until Councillor McKay returns or the end of term, whichever occurs first. Councillor Hunt is hereby appointed to the standing, ad hoc, and other committees as Councillor McKay as per the county's striking bylaw. All those in favor?
As a member of the council of the corporation of the county of Renfrew, I do solemnly promise and declare that on behalf of the county of Renfrew, I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any peculiary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth the Second. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if it were made under oath.
Welcome to the county of Renfrew. All right. Now that some housekeeping has been taken care of, Rose, what did you do? Roll call, please. Councillor Doncaster? Councillor Donahue?
Here.
Councillor Eamon?
Present.
Councillor Farr?
Present.
Councillor Hunt?
Here.
Councillor Keller?
Present.
Councillor Kingsbury?
Present.
Councillor Love?
Present.
Councillor Miller?
Present.
Warden Murphy?
Here.
Councillor Packett?
Present.
Councillor Reed?
Here.
Councillor Ryanwall?
Present.
Councillor Robinson?
Present.
Councillor Stack?
Here.
Councillor Sweets?
Present.
Councillor Visnesky Moore?
Here.
Thank you. And now I'll ask if there is any disclosure of peculiary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, can I get an adoption of the minutes from the August 30th meeting, moved by Councillor Visnesky Moore, seconded by Councillor Kingsbury? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? As we gather in chambers this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting today on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. Members of county council, during the month of September, I attended 18 meetings on county business. On September 7th, I also attended the opening of the 163rd Renfrew Fair. Thank you so much to the town of Renfrew, it was a great event. On September 8th, I participated in the annual Wardens Golf Tournament held at Whitel Golf Club in the township of Bongassure Valley. Seventy-eight golfers participated in the event, which raised $3,700 to support the Renfrew Victoria Hospital Foundation Oncology Unit. Thank you to all who attended and helped make this day a success. And I should actually repair that, Whitel's actually in North Algonquin Wilberforce. From September 13th to 15th, I attended the Ontario East Municipal Conference, held at the Ambassador Hotel in Kingston. Attendees received updates from the Honorable Bill Morrow, Minister of Municipal Affairs, and the Honorable Jeff Leo, Minister of Agriculture, Food, and Rural Affairs. I remain an active participant, attending many plenary sessions on economic development, land use planning, and municipal governance. It was also a great opportunity to reconnect with colleagues from around eastern Ontario and share commonalities. This month, I continued taping Kajiko segments. Topics included the agreement on the intermunicipal response between the city of Ottawa and the county of Renfrew, further provision of paramedic services, and Zombie Thrill Run in support of the Algonquin Trail. The county of Renfrew will be registering a team in the Zombie Thrill Run, which will include elective officials and staff. We'll get to that later on in the reports. On behalf of all members of county council, I extend condolences to the family of past Warden Nicholas Lipinski, formerly of Berries Bay. Mr. Lipinski was Warden in 1978, reeve of Ratcliffe Township, now the Township of Madawaska Valley, from 1966 to 1980, and a councillor for Sherwood Jones and Burns from 1986 to 1988. On behalf of all members of county council, I extend condolences to the Director of Public Works and Engineering, Steve Bulland, and his family on the passing of his wife Sandy. I will remind those assembled of the following: The county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. Thank you. We have no delegations. Is there any correspondence?
I have one piece of correspondence, Madam Warden. It's addressed to Warden Murphy and members of council. Thank you for your donation to the Zion Lutheran Church Urban Restoration Fund. Your gift will help ensure that future generations will enjoy the music which Sandy gave in the past. I also wish to express my appreciation for all of your support, understanding, and encouragement and through outstanding females. Your kindness has provided great comfort to both of us during the difficult time. I wish you all good health and much happiness in the future. God bless, Steve Bulland. All of the correspondence as a result of the physical review.
Thank you, and welcome back, Steve. At that, we're going to move ahead with committee reports, and we'll move to the striking report. Councillor Gummick, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. We, the rest of the committee, wish to recommend as follows: Bylaws. Number one, the Council of Resignations Resolution, number STCC 170808. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that Mayor Sheldon Keller of the Township of Brunel Lindock in Raglan be appointed to the Development Property Committee and the Social Services Committee, and as an alternate to the Land Division Committee. Further, that Mayor Robert Reed of the United Townships of Head Claret Mariah be appointed to the Health Committee and Social Services Committee. Further, that Councillor Robert Kingsbury be appointed to the Operations Committee. Further, that Councillor Kim Love be appointed to the Striking Committee as Vice Chair. And further, that Councillor Janice Visnesky Moore be appointed to the Renfrew County Forestry and Wood Processing Committee. And further, that a revised bylaw to appoint the county committees for the ensuing year or until their successors are appointed be adopted at the August 30th, 2017, oh, sorry, at the September 27th, 2017, meeting of county council. Background is available here for everyone to read. I don't think I need to go through that. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members. I've got Doncaster, Deborah Farr, Jennifer Murphy, and Robert Sweet.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, can I have a mover, please?
Salute.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed if any? Wonderful period. So now you gentlemen can sit on your appointed committees. Congratulations. And again, to all three new members, welcome to the county of Renfrew. And at that, we'll move on to the Health Committee report. Councillor Visnesky Moore?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Members of county council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows: Information item number one is the resident population. Number two is the LYN network waitlist information, the Chantilly LYN. Three is the international paramedic visits, and this is when Mike was talking about this, it was great news. I mean, we had an opportunity to share, and they had an opportunity to get some feedback from us, so it was a really good visit. Number four is the update from the Community Paramedic. That I is Community Paramedic Wellness Clinics, and number two, Community Paramedic Remote Patient Monitoring. And the third bullet is Community Paramedic Situation Table. Number five is our DFID program, just an update on that. And then we'll move on to number six, the Lodge Foundation Update. They made $1,500 on the Fiddle Fest, and that's always a great event to attend, and that's a great amount of money that they raised for the home. And then on the B part, again, the foundation, all its hard work, they donated $24,420, and they bought four new awnings for the lodge. They do both foundations, the Lodge and the Boncher Manor foundations are a great asset to both homes. And then, of course, the gala as number seven is the Boncher Manor Foundation Gala. All is, which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, committee members Doncaster, Donahue, Farr, Murphy, and Kingsbury.
Thank you. We'll go back to number one, resident population. Number two, the LYN. Number three, the international paramedic visits. Number four, the Community Paramedic Update. Anything in there, the Wellness Clinics? Oh, Councillor Eamonn?
Yes, if someone would be so kind as to refresh my memory on this, or teach me something. The Community Paramedic Situation Tables, are they one for the county, or are there several across the respective communities? I can't recall.
Could you just repeat?
I was gonna ask for the...
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
So it's at number three, the Situation Table, sub-number three.
Oh, so now, oh, sub-number three, sorry.
Yes, so is it, are there several tables across the respective communities in Renfrew counties that are a fairly large and diverse area? Or is there one, and is there any cross-community more than one?
That's actually an excellent question. I think there is only one, because of our geographic, oh, you're batting a thousand today, Peter. I believe there's only one. There is only one at this time, but that's a very interesting look, idea. Please.
Madam Warden, so the Striking Table is a collaboration with the OBP and the Social Services. So they, across the county, target a population that needs support from all different organizations. So as of all, I think we're trying to meet the need of all community in the Renfrew County with the collaboration of OBP, Social Services, Paramedic Services, to target that population that's in need of these table.
supplementary?
If I might, could at some point, it be considered to have more than one table? Because I look at the needs of the various communities. Whether it's the unfortunate suicides of teens in some segments of our county, whether it's seniors, because some of our seniors are dispersed more tightly in areas that are quite different. And I would suggest you have five hospitals, and at minimum, three OBP attachments, and it might make sense at some point to broaden the physical, but I'm satisfied with their answer at this point. Thank you.
Certainly something to consider going forward. We can speak to Mike about that, so, thank you. Number five, the DFID program. Number six, the Lodge Foundation Update. And number seven, the gala. I hope everybody's bought their tickets, for a great cause. The report as a whole. Seeing none, can I get a mover? I saw a vote, Madam Warden. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed if any? At this time, I know the press and our lovely guests at the back, thank you for being here today, we'll do Ottawa or everything later on. We do have a matter to go into closed, and Michidi has to leave fairly soon, so could I ask for a mover and seconder to go into close for the purposes of, you mean, labor relations? Labor relations? There are two different ones. Oh, for health. Let's just do health now. Yeah, yeah. We'll do the, should I just scratch this off? Okay. Yeah, so labor relations or employment negotiations. Mover, seconded by Kim Love. All those in favor? Excellent. We're now in close, no microphones. Welcome back, everyone. I hope you had a nice little break. Please be seated, and we will move on with the Operations Committee report, and I will turn this over to Councillor Packett.
Thank you, Warden. We, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows: Information, A1, Monthly Report, and Departmental Variance Report. You can see that there are also initiative maintenance and capital programs, along with the anticipated cost reduction at the end of the year. I have two, the Monthly Project Status Report, is there for your information. I have three, County Route 51, while Bogart Extension Project. We have always been having a continued conversation with the federal government, provincial government on this, to make sure that they're, were informed in their mind about the importance of this project. But it also had a recent change in command at Garrison Patawawa, and there's going to be some, there's polls that the community meet with the new staff at the Garrison in order to make sure that they're still on board, they're aware of the importance of this project. And four, Resolution, Ministry of Transportation Delegation, Resolution, number OPCC 170968. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that invitation be extended to the Ministry of Transportation Eastern Region Staff to attend an upcoming meeting of county council and by, an overview of recent and future projects and activities within the county. This is something that county council has done on an annual basis, a regular basis, to get updated from those folks. Those recommend the resolutions there for your proposal, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, council members, Love, McKay, Miller, Murphy, and Ryanwall.
Thank you. We'll go back to number one, the Treasures Report. Number two, the Project Status Report. Number three, County Route 51, Councillor Sweet.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that update there, just to give maybe council a little bit of comfort level or an understanding of what is going on in the Garrison at this point in time. During the last 18 months, there have been three Garrison commanders. Fortunately, the current one that is in place, Colonel Louis Uppoy, was the deputy commander nine months ago. He has been reappointed back to the Garrison as a full colonel, and is now the Garrison Commander. He was the individual who was responsible, really, for organizing a thing that we have every three months, and that's the liaison meeting, our group, our management team and their management team. And as part of that, is always on the agenda, things like the trail, County Route 51, to name a few. So he is fully versed in this particular situation, and so it would not hurt, certainly, to have a chat with him, me coming down on the 24th of October, and that will be part of the agenda. And I can certainly give him an update on behalf of the calendar, but I would suggest that that's a good idea, to continue with contacts with the Garrison. It's a very fluid place up there these days, so you never know. Three and eighteen months, two were probably bringing your generals and out of there, and Louis was on his way to the pack, and caught him, sent him to Patawawa, so subs could be in, right? Anyway, he's now in place, great guy, but the RSM has gone, Phil Richards and Mr. Burner is his name, is replacing Phil Richards, so a good idea to maintain connections with the Garrison.
Thank you for that very important information. And as we well know now, in order to have a federal and provincial project go forward, it has to be deemed a priority project by the province. And the way that we do that is exactly the way we did it with Highway 417. It's keeping on them and letting them know not only the economic benefits, the issues we're having, the challenges we have, and it's about staying on top of these projects. And we see how successful the Highway 17 team was, so we definitely want to keep our finger on the pulse of this. Anything further on three? Number four, the resolution, asking me out to yoga, can you join us? Seeing none, the report as a whole. Can I get a mover, please? All those in favor, opposed if any? All right, and we'll move ahead to the Development Property Committee, and I'll ask Chair Sweet to introduce our lovely guests at the back.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. We are delighted to have you today. Diane McKinnon, who is the Executive Director of the Renfrew County Community Futures Corporation, sitting at the back, and also Miss Carmen Rule, who is the Regional Advisor for all ministries with the problems of material, I think that's a good question, it's a threatening term, but in particular, citizenship, immigration, tourism, culture, and sport, to name a few, and whatever else is available. Welcome to the county council. Members of county council, Media Development Public Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows: A number of information items, the planning division activity track can be found on page 22, environmental issues, the Musquega Lake, there's a letter there from the Minister of the Environmental Change, Mr. Bell Deder, Mr. Gary Young-Husman, can be found on page 23, 24. The Craft Evaluation Report can be found on page 25. Item number four, The Taste of the Valley, two successful Taste of the Valley, and another one coming up, I'm sure it will be equally enjoyable in Carlton on October the 14th, the Ontario Municipal Cycling, Computer Cycling Program, you see the contents there, a lot of municipalities are coming on board to work with the county on that particular initiative. The Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization Annual Conference will be held October the 23rd in the British Playhouse in Bancroft, if you've got the opportunity down there, tourism is a rising chart, and there will be the trusted speakers and such right down there. Have to imagine that number seven is the Toronto International Snow Build, Snow Build Show, the ATV and Power Sports, who will be attending that with staff from the Economic Development Group. Item number eight is Noxious Weeds, the bitters there, you can see that, is found on page 26. The Algonquin Trail, 2017 work line, just to give you a sense of what's happening there, there's work being done currently on the Ironcliff Trail, going through Ironcliff, Thomas Cavanaugh, and then Pembroke. The Pembroke one is, as a result of funding that we'll be getting from the Zombie Run, which I talked a bit later. Patawawa is getting some work done as well, Renfrew is getting some work done, and of course, Carlton is also getting some work done as well. So there's some movement going forward on the trail finally, and we hope to see it hopping, running, and moving, and people using it, and so forth, and so that we can get these things out. Under item number 10, I guess, is the Zombie Run that I talked about, and it's nice to see a team that's going in there. I don't know what I'm supposed to do on the 28th, but I'm being dressed up as a old zombie or whatever, but I...
You have to dress up for that?
Pardon me. And really won't take much to dress me up like that. I speak for Annie of everybody. Anyway, I wish a lovely success, because all the money that's generated throughout particular weekend is going to, into the trail refurbishing, if you wish, or upgrades or whatever, in the city of Pembroke, from sort of the worship lodge going forward, going west. the city of Pembroke, from sort of the worship lodge going forward, going west. If you can get there, great, this is all helping getting as much money as we can. Real property, item number 11 can be found on page 30, Capital Official Projects is page 31. This line is it anyway, there's an opinion there on whose property it is and what you can do, et cetera, with that, it's an legal opinion that was, we could share with everyone, so you have that there. Active transportation strategy, the revision of 2017, Resolution Number DPCC 170967, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, the County Council approved the revised 2017 active transportation study. Warden, do you want me to go through the whole background on this particular study?
I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads. I think people have raised, yeah.
You do?
Yes. No, no. I think people have raised.
Let me drink the water. Item number 50, the X4150 Track Signage, Resolution Number DPCC 170969, moved by the Chair and seconded by Committee, that the County of Redford partnered with Forests Ontario to replace in the right time. It takes a forest sign on the site of the X4150 Track Sign at the corner of Pointwater, Northern Highway 170 section, and that's other funds to support the initiative, up to $2,500, come from the County of Redford, 2017 provision for unharmed. Just basically a quick one-on-one on that, that was put in place to recognize the tree planting there during the 150th celebrations of the County of Redford and Mother Nature took care of the signs, so we're trying to put something back in there to recognize what it was all about. Do you want me to move that onto the addendum?
Please.
Okay. I'll move to the addendum. I think it's a little bit of prime of this, because I think this supports that for those who have not been updated on the physicality of the project, feel a pleasure for what we're doing. I'll read the resolution, Warden. Resolution Number DPCC 170975, moved by the Chair and seconded by Committee, Chair of Redford submit a letter of intent to designate as a managing body of the Ottawa River's part of the Canadian Heritage River Program to maintain the responsibility of management and administration of the Ottawa River as defined by the Principles, Procedures, and Operation Guidelines of 2016 of the Heritage Canadian Rivers Program implemented through the Development Property Committee. I use, the word in there is managing body, would be much for further work, custodian of this particular program. I'll go a little bit into the background to give members of County Council a little bit of knowledge of you, the background of what the Canadian Heritage System River Designation is all about. The, this is a cultural and heritage designation that the river system was created for, it's a federal, provincial, and heritage document to recognize outstanding exemplary rivers of Canada and ensure the sustainability and management of the heritage values for generations to come. To qualify for inclusion in the Canadian Heritage Systems, River System, a river or section of the river must demonstrate outstanding culture, cultural, and heritage values and offer quality recreational opportunities. That's an important line that I just left red there. The Waterway features an exceptional wide range of world-class paddling, rafting, kayak opportunities, along with recreational boating, fishing possibilities, and will feature a variety of wilderness, rural, and urban settings, waterfront areas, and all along the river become the focus of community development and recreation. Just by way of a background, for some who may remember the Living Legacy Project, which started around 2001, 2000, they're about the kiosk program that was put in place and finished around 2002 or there, I would say, from commencing in a conference that was held up at the Patawawa area in Yarra. From that, it was decided that in 2003, the move to define or to have the Ottawa River designated as a heritage river. This was spearheaded by Len Hopkins, longtime member of the department who had a vision for this particular issue. This was in 2003, so 14, 15 years ago this was starting, and it was put in place and he formulated a committee of senior bureaucrats, shall we say, staff, First Nations, the honorary Chair, that was William Commander, the spiritual leader of the Obankins, a very much part of that, the Obankins were always involved in that. So there was various esteemed community representing all of the approach in that particular situation. I wanted to perhaps go to the middle of the second page that you have there, speaks to the goals, intents, and actions set out in the land and the plan, require the cooperation and participation of federal and provincial agencies, the Ottawa and First Nations, the Waterway community, both public and private stakeholders. And this speaks very much to MOU that was signed by the previous board with the Obankins, part of economic development in Redford County. I want to emphasize the very last phrase there or statement there, the management plan is not override, and this is a very important initiative here because it's been brought to the, to this chamber on many, many occasions, I'll probably explain this, the management plan does not override any existing policies and regulations, nor does it impose any new legislation. This has been, initiative has been brought to this chamber on many occasions, there is no legislative back process in place as far as this designation is concerned. There are requirements for the Canadian Heritage River Program, and one of those is to present a annual monitoring report, and that may sound like a very, very humorous thing, but it's not. A copy of that template which is used by this is a one-page template which you see right here, so you can certainly, if you wish. And it really, in essence, identifies the utilization of the river from a recreational point of view, heritage point of view, a cultural point of view. You can see some of the events that we have detailed out that could be included in this particular project. The Upper Ottawa Valley Race and Paddle Festival, the Deep River Triathlon, McNabb Days, Arnpire Riding Bowl Festival, et cetera. And from what I've just read out, you can see that it stretches from one end of the County of Redford to the other, and it seems to me that this is an ideal fit for the County of Redford to designate a custodian of this particular document. The, excuse me, there will be a plaque installed at Patawawa Point, Libellia, pardon me, fourth of, of all working, if anyone is willing to put in place. They were, they were the initial community that started, they're not started, just focused on as they, the anchors of this particular process. Additionally, every 10 years, the group is required to set a 10-year monitoring plan, as you can see, to speak of the heritage river designation, heritage values, where the awareness of the public as far as the designation is concerned as well, and they have to do a monitoring of the actual plaque, that's a very substantial mission. So I'm talking to staff, the staff have reviewed all of these documents that we've had here over the last 10 or 12 years, and they're quite comfortable that we can move forward with this, and not be making this recommendation to us. Capacity exists within the Development and Property Department to handle the tasks of this, this particular situation. Leaders in the field promote global heritage and culture, the department is capable of continuing the relationships, funding members of the heritage designation committee intending. The Redford County, through our partners and the Ottawa Tourist Association, have promoted over the years historical, cultural, and recreational importance of the Ottawa River. In particular, as you may recall, as some who are here, we branded the Redford County as the white water capital of Canada, and we have that MOU at face. There are four pillars here in economic development in the County of Redford, and we've spoken about that on many occasions, manufacturing, forestry, hydroculture, and one of the rising stars without a doubt is tourism. And this speaks to the very essence of what we're trying to do, numbers up way up, and this opportunity to manage this particular program is something that I don't think we, we should take in this. The second but last paragraph there, it should be noting that the County of Redford may withdraw as a managing body, or a custodian, as I keep referring to it, as a river manager at any time, with a pending or future commitment. I just wanted to remind County Council also on a situation which we were very adamant about, and that with regards to the Ottawa River. It talked about being, having a seat at the table, and this came from MP David McGinty, who was in the process of putting together an Ottawa River Watershed Committee, a council as a block, so we were very adamant that we be at the table with this particular situation to the point where a resolution was passed and a letter was written to Mr. McGinty by under the hand of the warders, Warden, saying that they look forward to discussions with regards to this particular committee that they wanted to be, we wanted to be able to. I'm suggesting to members of council that by sending in a letter of intent, there is a very good opportunity that we will not only be at the table, but we will be at the table as far as the designation is concerned. And so I am very serious about this, this is, this has been on the go since the year 2000. It was supposed to be designated in the year 2009 after it was put together. Mr. Hopkins put together an outstanding document, a background document for the heritage river, and a nominating document. I have to tell you that it's without a doubt one of the best documents, and that document, in my view, should be something that should be at every school, every history class in Redford County. It's an outstanding document, he was a passionate individual of history of the Ottawa Valley and in particular the Ottawa River. You refer to it, it's a grand old lady of 16th and 17th and 18th century, which was and opened up Canada, and it is rightfully so that it should be so designated, which it has been. It was supposed to be in 2009 designated as a river, but, and celebrated at a MacAtead Conference in Ottawa. It can fell to the side, and I'm not completely able to why it did that, but in 2016, the current Minister, Minister of the Federal Ministry of the Environment, signed off on this particular document, and the Ottawa River is now the heritage river so much as it should rightly deserves. So the intent of this, and the reason we're bringing it forward is the timelines are very tight. We were advised, and I can tell you, oh, about 10 days ago when we were in Kingston, that we should be putting a letter in of intent. This is the first opportunity that I've had to bring to the council and to bring to our committee, which I discussed earlier this morning. Let me just say, if you don't put your letter in, you're not going to get recognized and even get thought as far as the designation is concerned. So I would urge the council to seriously consider allowing us to go forward and send a letter, a letter of intent to be that custodian of the river system.
Thank you. Do you want to submit that report? All of which is respectfully submitted.
Oh, yes, of course. Yes. I mean, just do that. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself, the Chair, Committee Member, Vionne Gil, McKay, Miller, and Anthony Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because of the amount of information that's in this addendum, I think if, if you will indulge me, we'll deal with this first and then go back to the beginning of the report. Councillor Eamon.
Thank you, Warden. I'm very supportive of this, and it's always been a mantra of mine, and I don't think it comes as any surprise, that you can maintain or expand local influence, or local control, or local responsibility, and local meaning us, or infrastructure, or, or community properties, or legislation, I think it's very important. When I take a look at this, I think this is an opportunity, it's very, it's, I call it natural infrastructure. Natural infrastructure supplies a lot, supports a lot of economic development in our community, whether it's through tourism or culture, cultural pursuits. I liken it to the, to the acquisition of the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail. It connects us to communities outside of our region as well as our own communities within our region. And I also would suggest to you, you know, we've tried to expand our influence and our brand and our reputation to become a regional player. I would suggest to you, this would solidify our, our aims by becoming the regional player. When you take a look at what MP McGinty was attempting to do, I think what he was attempting to do was ignore the fact that the Ottawa River is a great, is a threat, is the City of Ottawa, and your ability to control their sewage, and they have controlled their sewage since they were incorporated. So I would suggest to you that Mr. McGinty should concentrate on the borders of the City of Ottawa and correct that problem before he goes further afield. But besides that, I think that this natural infrastructure, I think we're best suited to help manage it, because we already consider natural infrastructure every day. Our OP process is as flexible as we can make it. By suggesting solutions, we balance the needs of our community, whether they're cultural, recreational, commercial, environmental on a regular basis, so I think we've been good custodians of the, of our natural infrastructure already, and this makes perfect sense for us to take on this responsibility, and it is a responsibility, it's not something you take on with the thought of just maintaining the title. I think having this title as well allows us to be able to say with credibility whenever there is legislation coming out, whenever there is an attempt to, to control or direct the use of the, of the river or proximity, we have the added authority, and it's, it's not an authority that is measured in legal terms, it's an authority morally and on behalf of the community to suggest that how airship conducted on the river. So I'm very, I'm very supportive of this, and I, I think that if we don't do it, you know, you take a look at Obankin Park and the lightning of the footprint exercises where, you know, we recently dealt with that again, where somebody was sitting in their basement in Vancouver, in mom's basement, sitting pizza, sent in a frigging complaint, and now all of a sudden they're trying to shorten up. If we don't maintain our presence, we're going to have that happen again. If somebody else comes along, I'm not sure who, and becomes the authority, submits a letter, and they're the only one, or one of four, and they're selected, then all of a sudden we are in somebody else's tune, and if their outlook isn't balanced and ours, we're going to consider the economy, commercial interests, culture, recreation, and what's good for our community and the larger region. If any one of those is thrown out of balance by somebody only considering one above the rest, we will be struggling. So I would suggest to you, this is a goal and opportunity for us to really put a stamp on in use in the future and benefit to our community of the Ottawa River.
Thank you. Councillor Stafford.
Thank you. I absolutely support this as well, too. A few years back, Arnpire re-grounded its town and, you know, now they're down, now this is a town of two beautiful, two beautiful rivers, and the Madawaska and the Ottawa merge right at Arnpire, and probably one of the most beautiful parks in all of Ontario borders, you know, the, the river all going through the town of Arnpire. Since, I think it was Bob and Rayanne actually that introduced me to this, oh, I don't know, when I first came here, 10 or 12 years ago, and the delay, the delay in it, and I was really thrilled when it happened, and I hope someday all of those locations along the river will have nice signs and plaques that recognize it to the public. And Arnpire, it's used by the City of Ottawa, certainly by my colleagues, community at Madawaska, McNabb Raceway, as Arnpire uses the Madawaska River, you know, and uses their parks, so it's not just the communities that border along the river, the river is used by everybody. The thing I like about this is that if the county does this, it's a cross-section of 17 municipalities, 17 representations that are going to discuss issues, debate issues, and not one special interest group that's going to try to influence what happens with this as we go forward. So that's the biggest thing for me when I read- So that's the biggest thing for me, when I read this this morning, and I congratulate Staff on bringing it forward.
Thanks. Thank you for those comments. Councillor Gammick.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. I certainly, don't wish to repeat, I'm certainly in favour of comments raised by both, or made by both Councillors, even on staff. I absolutely am behind this. I think we demonstrated in Renfrew County that you're quite capable of taking the lead on these major issues, and are quite capable of managing these things. I think as part of that, we recognise that, well, certainly Renfrew County, from the tip, the western tip, northern tip, however you want to see it, ahead, Clara Mariah through down to where the rivers meet in Armpire, would be the single longest stretch of any political entity along the entirety of the Ottawa River. But I think that that in itself certainly lends credence to why we would take the lead. But recognising that taking the lead, that we are taking the lead, and certainly working collaboratively with all stakeholders that join and utilise and celebrate this fantastic natural feature that we have in the Ottawa River, right until it dumps into the St Lawrence River at the end of Montreal. I certainly want to, and I recognise that this, what's written here, is simply the background for this, but I think it's incredibly important that the historical aspect of this, certainly the economic development component is enormous. It is transformed from where it once was. The Ottawa River, and those, the watershed that fed it, was the incredible power of the river to generate, at the time, grinding grain products, woolen mills, et cetera. It is, has been for Renfrew County, and in fact the Ottawa Valley, simply the engine that drove our economy from the first time the champagne was very sure that he was going to find his way to the Orient, as he had with the Ottawa River. It turned out, I suppose disappointed that they weren't able to, but I think in the end, a much more valuable country has sprung from that, when one considers the incredible natural heritage of the enormity of the size of the Ottawa River water, sorry, the Ottawa River watershed, and on top of that, the historical performance of, this is between here and the Sculpa Parry Sound, this was the root of the incredible logging industry that transformed, certainly in the early years of the country of Canada. All of those materials that were coming down at Algonquin Park, they came down one of the five rivers, three major rivers and other rivers that run through our community. So this is an inherent fit, this is a natural fit for us to do this, and I think it's certainly embracing the economic development component, but I think equally from the perspective of tourism and the economic engine that that has become in our community, of recognising and celebrating the cultural heritage and natural heritage of this incredible water river.
Thank you. And Mr. Kelly provided our special meeting of DNP this morning with some of that historical literature, which actually Councillor Imo was just going through now, and it does, at the very end, you just want to show, Michael, at the very end of it, it has the timeline of the river, which is, oh, Craig has cottons right here, for anybody that would like them, you're so prepared, for anybody that would like them, and we just got to flip through them this morning, but some very interesting information in there. And I did note afterwards that one of those documents is in memory of Len Hawkins. So 10 years after his passing, his initiative is now being seen to fruition. Councillor Kingsbury.
Just a little different take on this, Madam Warden. When this river was being designated as a heritage river, it was concerned in our township, when residents obviously, the kilometre of ring restrictions, so. And when I look at this document, and I see management plan, that's going to raise some more red flags in our township, so I have to ask Councillor Sweet, does he foresee any other restrictions or any new restrictions coming along with this management plan?
Well, as I said to, ongoing, the management plan does not override any existing policies or regulations, nor does it propose any new legislation, period. Many people have been in this chamber, trying to articulate that there is nothing behind the designation as far as legislation, period. There's a plan in place, yes, and we will, if we're fortunate enough to be given the opportunity to be the custodians of the management, we will be managing the management plan that's already in place, but there are no regulations at that management plan, as far as restrictions for building setbacks or anything of that nature. We've tried to articulate that many times, but it seems to, a lot of times it gets twisted, and from our point of view, and from the river designation group's point of view, there are no restrictions on this, that are going to be implemented, Warden.
Thank you, and thank you for that response. I think, one of the things that I did say in DNP, I used the C-word, you know, if we don't do this, is will a conservancy come forward and want to manage this? And I see this as preemptive for us, and I also, I can't remember which one of you said it, but I completely agree that this is a natural fit for the County of Renfrew, and I'm completely in support of this. I think I saw Councillor Rymell first, and then Councillor Sweet. No, oh, Councillor Sweet.
Yeah, I don't know whether I articulated this or not, but the very last paragraph on the report, and I spoke about timelines, and how it's being crunched and so forth, but it's important that we get a letter, and if it's supported by County Council level, that we can make that happen. The official designation ceremony is being held in Patowawa, which was the host venue of the property from the inception of this initiative, on October 4th, 2017, and the request from the river system is that the managing body, Sub-Substitute River, will be designated by that time. So it's very important that we get the letter in there, saying that the County of Renfrew pushes to be the individual looking after that particular situation. That's why this is all being condensed, and I apologise for that, that there's a lot of information there, but that's the recent point.
Thank you. Councillor Gammick.
Thank you, Mons Lord, Madam Warden. I very gratefully, when you're on break, I have a moment to speak with Councillor Sweet, but I wonder now, if you didn't really have time to play that out, but you asked that four act question, perhaps I would bring it forward. And I had noted that the province of Quebec has also subsequently to this side of the river, let's say, being declared heritage in 2016, the province of Ontario, sorry, of Quebec, has now done so. I was wondering how this would be impacted, if this would be impacted, if there was any opportunity, perhaps to reach a proster, or to our cousins, and perhaps the Pontiac County. So perhaps Councillor Sweet could ask, I'm not familiar with the management plan, how this is expected to be implemented.
Well, let me just say that going back to the early days, the province of Quebec was in fact part of the overall process. Made for whatever reason, decided that they wanted to roll their separate ways. It was a very harmonious separation, in which the group on the Ontario side, very successfully looked forward for the designation. So this designation at this point in time, going forward, is for the Ontario side of the Ottawa River. That's what we're asking to be the keepers of at this point in time. Not in the future, who knows what that might be, but the process that is happening in Quebec is different from the heritage designation that we're looking at here right now. It's a completely different program. That was their call, that was their charge, so it doesn't necessarily drive at this time with, hopefully, kind of, you know.
Thank you, yes, I was going to say, I don't think we're there quite yet. So if there's nothing further, just two things. Number one, Craig does have the agenda and all the information you need about next Wednesday's event. It is at the golf course at the Garrison, it starts at 8:30, and the plaque unveiling. The second thing, I want to congratulate Cameron Gould and your whole team for bringing this, what sounds like a huge, amazing plaque, and the only substantial plaque, I believe, bringing it to Patowawa, where I'm very excited to see it, and to, I believe Walter's known there will be other smaller signs, is that correct?
There can be.
There can be, okay. So, but, did you need something? Councillor Love? Did you have something? I'm sorry, I missed you there.
No.
Now that you're in the back row.
No, I don't, I've kind of given up that you didn't see me. Just as someone who has only sat in these chambers for three years so far, this was a lot to have pretty much presented before me this morning, and I know there's a lot of members in here who didn't even get that opportunity to think about it, for as long as I've had to think about it. But when I see the body of work that's been done on this, and can identify that a lot of good people have gone before us and done that work, and they're presenting something that obviously is going to be in the best interest of Renfrew County to be engaged in this, to have a say in it, I have to sort of assume that this is about having a vision for the future, and I'm accepting that that work was done by good people, it's good work, and so I'm going to say that I'm very much in support of this, because I think this is how we go forward. We make sure we have a say in the destiny of this amazing natural resource that flows past our borders, and even though it doesn't flow directly past my municipality, I think for the entire county, this is critically important natural asset, as Councillor Imo said, that we have to have a say. We can't let others step up and take this work, even if it does cost us a little bit of money to do it, it's well worth it. So I just wanted to say, for those of you who, you know, this has come to you really suddenly, and there isn't a lot of background that you have in front of you, there is background, the work has been done, and staff presented us with something that you really couldn't say no to this morning, because this is our future. So please give it a serious thought, and I'm going to go for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rymell.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The Ottawa River touches a large portion of the Cameronian hills, and when we first started talking about this, I was somewhat concerned, but after hearing everything here today, I'm feeling much, much better about it. But I want to make sure that as a municipality, that we do have a say in this, and if the voices through the County of Renfrew, that we'll be a much stronger voice.
Couldn't agree more. That being said, I'm going to call for the vote on this addendum, and then we're going to go back, if that's all right with everyone? All right, so I'll ask all those who, both residents in front of you, all those in favour? Opposed, if any? Excellent. And now we'll go back to the beginning of the development of Cartby Report. Number one, the activity tracker. Number two, the environmental issues on Muskrat Lake. Councillor Miller.
Yeah, I'd just like to commend these two gentlemen, Mr. Dear and Mr. Younghusband, for refining the mechanism to draw attention to the problem of Muskrat Lake. So now we just have to wait and see what happens from now till December 2018, and maybe we'll get a clearer direction of action to finding movement on Muskrat Lake. So thank you to those gentlemen. I'm not sure why we as politicians couldn't find something within the ministry's environment that I kind of feel kind of obligated to look at it. But in any case, they're looking at it, and that's the main thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Miller. Anything further? Number three, the draft environmental employment evaluation report. Stock and Case to the Valley? Councillor Imo.
Yes, if you don't mind, Warden, thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd like to report that the event in Renfrew was very successful, over 250 cars, I was very interested in, I managed to buy some money and sold at the same time that. Very successful day. And I plug, a clouded one, I've been with five or six times in the last little while, it's equally as entertaining and interesting in Renfrew and in Berber as well, for the year, and so I really hope the County Council takes the opportunity to get out and to attend and support these last two, it's a very quality.
Excellent. Any further on four? Number five, the cycling programme? Number six, Tourism Summit? Number seven, the snowmobile show? Number eight, Noxious Weeds? Number nine, the Algonquin Trail Work Plan for 2017? Councillor Stack.
Yeah, just a quick comment. First of all, you know, do people know, last year, this year, Armpire did a $11 million downtown revitalisation project? And thanks to the work of operation of both Craig and Steve's groups, and, you know, we have to, have to say, there's another gentleman historically had your job, Craig at Humber, so, you know, but a key guy, I've got to mention Jason, the work that's gone into this in the last seven or eight years that I've been involved, but the initiative to capitalise on that project in Armpire with Kavanaugh as a company, and the bartering system that went on to use that trail property, and now look what's happened with the trail across Armpire that they're doing, as basically as a payment for the use of the property over the last two years. So it's been a real joint cooperative kind of position, and it's worked out really well. They're doing a great job, and, you know, the effort that went into committee and the staff, and holding those public meetings, and all of the input we got, and I'll just say that some of it I thought was really valuable, some of it I thought had less value, but, you know, it was good, and I got a fair bit of input, and phone calls, and comments about it. Now, I have to tell you, the pressure I'm under for people to get on that trail, I hear nothing about the negatives that were going on in the last three or four years, but I can't walk anywhere in Armpire now, and I live half a block from the trail, all right? But when can we get on, and we all know that some people are on already, but it is still closed, and it's a trespassing situation, and it's not safe yet, so we don't want to advise people to do it, but there certainly is a lot of enthusiasm, I'm aware of an error in anyways, and I think a big part of it was this deal the guys cut. Now it's a visual, you know, the trail is there, the finished product can be seen, some of it, it's just made such an impression.
Thank you. Councillor Sweet.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, this whole project is now coming together, it's almost like the river definition, starting in 2009, and now we're moving it forward, and the vision was to start in the large urban areas and move east and west, and where possible, seek out opportunities as far as in-kind contributions to lower the cost, and staff are doing that on a regular basis, such as what Councillor Stack has suggested for using the trail. We're getting some in-kind stone dusting and things of that, so we're seeking these opportunities in order to extend the trail as much as we can, so. It's nice to see it moving ahead, we're looking for successes, people like the Zombie Run are giving us $25,000 of their votes, that's all helping to repair some of the costs of the taxpayers here, and I'm excited about it. It's moving east and west as we speak, it's a working progress, and it's going to be in time, and a lot of people are anxious to get on with this, Councillor Stack has said, as a lot of people in all of these areas that I've related to are interested in getting on to it as well, so sit tight, because we're eventually going to get there.
Thank you. Anything further? And we'll move to number 10, the Zombie Run. Councillor Robinson, I know that you're championing the elected to be involved in this.
I'm chanting the word to sponsor me. I just realised, this is the last time I want to see everyone before the run, so anyone who's willing to sponsor me, I would be very happy to take your name and money today. I'd...
She just swooped right in there. I need to be sponsored too, and so is Bob. Councillor Stack. Councilor Scott, happy to.
So this means we don't have to do any walking as well? I thought we had to. I thought we had to do a phone or something.
No, I think we agreed, you either walk or you donate, you don't have to do both. It would be lovely if you did both, but you don't have to do both, right?
And I would just add to spice it up, I'd be willing to wear your pin from your municipality online shirt outside.
Oh.
I thought you said it was my teen job or something.
Councilor Emo.
Isn't it your anniversary?
What I will do, because it's important. What I'll do, because it's important to all my friends here, is I will make a t-shirt with your name, wanting to sponsor me, so it's like.
Twenty bucks.
It's like.
It's competition now.
All right, then, yeah, this is getting a can now, next thing you know, they'll be carrying placards with township, oh, we do have those. We do have those.
Is that what the warden is proposing that she would do?
I'm not strong enough to carry that the whole way. Mr. Kelly has a comment, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you two to the floor. Just when you're registering, and just so you know, the staff of the county of Renfro is working on a wellness challenge, if you will, for everybody to, to join and have some friendly competitions between departments and percentages of who can get the most people out of its own. Paul has a staff of two, so if he gets both of them out, he can have the pizza lunch and his own. But it extends beyond this building and to all the county staff, of course. So when you're registering, because we want to show the support of the county of Renfro, including its elected, in terms of raising the most money, is that, I've, I've put it up there, Jason's made a poster up, is that if you join the Renfro Trail Blazers team, so you know when you go onto thezombie301pemper.com, is that join a team, join the team, Renfro Trail Blazers, and that will, that will join into that overall. Please don't get sponsors if you, if you want or not, and that will at least put it all into this simple as we're all collecting for. Thank you, Chair.
Excellent, good information. Councilor Robinson.
Just a clarification, are we running as a team over 10K as a relay or are we doing a 5 or 10K ourselves?
That's a very good question.
And Warden, through you, Warden, to, to Councilor Robinson, I, I think I've seen you run, so I'm going to be in the back of the Ford with her and you're going to be way ahead. We're not running as a team, we're just registering as a team, that's all, is that all the money raised, there's prizes towards those teams that make the most money, get some prizes and some recognition. If you wish to register on your own, that's fine, but that, just suggest and raise it.
No, I know, we had talked about doing it a 10K relay so that each participant would do one K.
Oh, I see, okay.
As a relay, just checking to make sure that, you know, people know what we're doing.
Again, through you, in, in the end, if you register and don't run, it's about, it's about participation, of course, but if you register and pay your $30, that would be fine, I'm sure if everybody registered and relayed it, there's no, there's a timed event, I don't think anybody's saying in this room that we're going to win the timed event, or maybe they are, it's about a something.
No, but I, I think, what Councilor Robinson is asking is her initial idea, and I thought it was an excellent one, is that if we were going to do the 10K, get 10 of us elected and staff and each do one kilometer.
Yes.
These do have to register as individuals and pay as individuals.
Yeah, and that's fine, but I definitely, if we can get 10 of us that would do one or two kilometers, like I'll do a kilometer, I'm not doing 10. I am not in good shape these days.
Yes, yes, you may.
Yes, that's dance.
And, and, you know, some of the, that was the idea that we talked about, I think it's a great idea, we could relay, Councilor Sweet's wallet with us for the 10K, but, you know, probably the best solution for us is if we could work that out, is that, you know, if people wanted to do it, hold them great, that some of us that aren't energetic and not likely to make it unless we get on the back of the paramedic van and go the last 9.5 kilometers, and so if we could work that out, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anything, anything further on the Zombie Run? Excellent. Number 11, the projects update. The, number 12, the capital and capital under threshold. Number 13, whose land is it anyway? Interesting read. Number 14, the active transportation strategy. Councilor Duncan.
Thank you, Madam Warden. A few questions slash comments on this. If you indulge me, maybe work my way through and then throw it on the floor for discussion or answer. Beginning on, I'm going to go on the page of the PDF, so this is section 1.2, benefits. First three, three benefits, four benefits, I guess, are four bullet points all with respect to health. And just, I, a member, for anybody that may not still, I sit on board health and certainly Renfro County District Health is becoming a much more dynamic, active and energetic and engaged organization and are reaching out in nearly a number of ways to various stakeholders with an alignment in, in public health. And I certainly would, would encourage that. There are linkages identified farther down that we work kind of in conjunction with other strategies and certainly RCBHU has a strategy, a strategic plan that's put together in 2015 and runs through 2019 will be updated again, but I think that is one. I recognize that there are quite a number of, of benefits to all of the active transportation, and certainly from my perspective, two of the largest are the health of getting people more active and of course diminishing emissions, which I'll be going to talk about later. But on the first ones, I just, I've, I've been doing some deep dogging into this for an entirely different matter, but I did find this, in the strategic plan that Ontario Public Health put together in 2013, recent 2013, it says, every $1 invested in efforts to promote healthy eating and physical activity saves $6 in the cost of care for people with chronic diseases. So there actually, we can quantify where some of the benefits. Now, there isn't a return on investment, typically we understand a return on investment being economic, but I think once these health, this increase to the health of our population begins to work its way through, I think, and will obviously begin to see that. But I was, on that first page of benefits, I'm wondering if we could also add somewhere, it ends with a mullet on, coordinated with the Ontario Cycling Strategy. I would certainly see inherently that this contributes to a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and positive contribution to the Canadian commitment to the Paris report, simply because active transportation is meant to displace transportation by mechanical means without reservation, that will diminish greenhouse gas emissions. So I would certainly like to see that incorporated into the, the benefits of the active transportation Sorry, just, these are, I put all these notes attached to, to report itself to the proposed strategy.
Can I, I, when I read it, I thought the enhances intergovernmental collaboration around active transportation, I thought that was speaking to the Paris support and the idea of reducing the greenhouse gases, am I incorrect?
Thanks, Mary, and Mary, thanks, Chair, to the chair and to the floor. Doesn't, doesn't, I think if you're, if you're going to be specific, these, these strategies point to, point for some funding opportunities. Talk with Mr. Bolton just pretty quickly. Though this actually makes sense for that bullet to be in there, that if we save GHG's or greenhouse gases or, or you point to Candace's commitment to the Paris, Paris government for some, I think it'd be a good addition to the points.
Thinking on my perspective to answer your comments, I think, I think that it is
You want it to be specific.
In the interest of society itself to underscore that there is an interest for that specific reason. Sorry, the, the other, sorry, the second specific suggestion I was looking at adding was with respect to, to item number five, which is establishing, sorry, this is on page 49. This number five says, establish a framework to sustain the active transportation strategy in Renfro County, and I do know that it does list as a bullet point the engagement, certainly at its inception with the Physical Activity Network of Renfro County, and I do know that the health unit does sit as a participant in the Physical Activity Network. But I would certainly like to again highlight more specifically the, I think, the synergy that we had with the health unit specifically, as opposed to its, in collaboration with some of these other organizations. But specifically what I would, what I would add here as a bullet point is also to identify other current or emerging organizations with interests aligning with active transportation. These, I think, as we see these trails and hard shoulders, et cetera, these initiatives undertaken to enhance active transportation, you probably are going to see more organizations also emerging, and I think this speaks to perhaps Councilor Scott's comments with respect to the trail and the Algonquin Trail improvements in the town of Armpar. So I think we always want to have, that that be a bullet, that we specifically are constantly surveying the environment to say, who else can we work with in, in really embracing and fully supporting these? That, that pretty much is the, I think, the, the fullness of the comments, but I, I think that this initiative is one that should embrace as many organizations in the workforce one because I think that the sum of the parts is greater, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments to those two friendly amendments to this strategy? Councilor Emo.
I think it exists.
Let it go, okay. I was, I was just going to ask you that.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So what we're going to do is we're going to say that county council approved or revised 2017 active transportation strategy as amended. We're good?
I'm fine with that. If you wish me to work with perhaps this.
Craig's been making others.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Just Craig, if I may, just to, to two bullets that will be amended for the purposes of the man, Craig, can you just put those in? Can you just make sure they'll reiterate them for?
I'd like to, sure. Thanks, thanks, Chair. So those points, as I understand, to point three or incorporate into point three, one point three, one point two.
One point two.
Sorry, one point two, that, I don't know if you're basically, it contributes to a reduction in greenhouse gases and, and contributes to Candace's commitment to the Paris support. And then under point five, identify other or current organizations that contribute to the active transportation.
So that's how the stuff treated everybody? Excellent, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, opposed if any? Thank you. We'll move on to number 15, the extra 150 signage. I just, on my way back from Barry's Bay yesterday, I saw one of the forestry signs on the back of one of the Mad Valley signs, very nice. So I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, opposed if any? The report, oh, the report is a whole. Can I get a mover, please? Do you not want to go to lunch? Okay, all those in favor? Excellent, and at that, I think we'd better have some lunch because I think people are getting pinched. Uh, does, half an hour?
Yes.
Yes? Yes, all right, half an hour again, thanks. Good afternoon, everyone, I hope you all enjoyed lunch, and you all have a seat. And we will place a note by and have ready to our social services committee, Councilor Robinson, please.
Hi, Craig.
Oh, if you do have some introductions, it's time to talk.
Thank you very much, Warden. Before I begin my report, I'd like to welcome Rochelle Blanchett, she's the early years advisor for the Ministry of Education. The ministry has provided very positive feedback on our early years transition plan. She's sitting beside the manager of Child Care Services, Judy Muppelhill, who's the author of the transition report. We have in front of us after months of consultation with stakeholders, inside of number six on our report. I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Judy and her staff. They've, this intensive review took hours and months to compile. They've identified, moving forward, the opportunities and challenges that are available to us and I just really want to congratulate her, excellent report, and looking forward to seeing you come to fruition. Thank you. So we, your social services committee, wish to report the recommended follows under information. Item number one, the social housing registry wake list. Item number two, the child care statistics. Item number three, the Ontario Works caseload statistics. Number four, the social assistance modernization, social assistance contact center. This, we had a very wholesome discussion about this at, at our committee. The warden has sent a letter expressing the county of Renfro's concerns regarding the planning of the creation of the social assistance contact center. It's attached for your curricula. I'm going to ask for the director at this point, would like to add some comments to that.
Thank you, Chair. I may, Warden, through you to county council. With respect to the letter that went out, it was a bit of a surprise as to how immediate the response was that we received on that letter. The letter went out on Monday or Tuesday and I had received a call from the director responsible for, with their calling, not a pilot project, but, you know, I'm not sure if they, they phrased it in here, but, you know, I call it a pilot project essentially, where they will be at ODSP Ontario Disability Support Program, moving to a call center. Call center would be located as part of this pilot project in the city of Kingston, but the pilot would happen in Cambridge. So what will happen with our ODSP clients locally, and again, we're not responsible for ODSP, but we are responsible for Ontario Works, and typically what happens with ODSP, Ontario Works will follow. So what will happen is, and with the goal of the province is in this case, is that it will try to eliminate 75 to 80% of the administrative type calls that an ODSP caseworker will get and they will go through the, the call center. What was expressed at committee and what I expressed to the director, the challenges that presents for our rate payers of Renfro County is that these folks quite often don't have advocates, they don't have the ability to, to utilize a call center or express through a call center type of approach what their challenges are. I understand quite often that it's, the questions that I'll be getting will be, how much is my check or when is my check coming? But typically that conversation evolves into other needs these clients may have. And so I think that piece was missed and I think committee agrees that this may be a challenge moving forward for some of our clients or recipients of ODSP. I presented the same information to staff and I think staff with many years of experience they have dealing with clients are on the same page with this as well and have some reluctance as to how this will work. What the province though has asked us is to bear with them as they go through this, this test that they're going to do and see where it goes. You know, one of the things they did say to us, though, the minister has reservations with it, and the reaction to the letter that the warden sent was such that if the county of Renfro has some real objections to this, we may not proceed with this test. So we're seeing where this is going, we're waiting for the response back and I'm, I'm curious as to why we haven't received a formal response back yet. And I'm wondering if they're considering how they roll it out or rethinking this idea based on committee's concerns and the letter from the warden. I'll leave it at that, Chair, if that's okay?
Thank you, Paul. And I just sort of add to that, we, you know, certainly from the committee perspective, we weren't knocking down, there is, there's severe concerns about this and about the, the lack of human contact and human understanding. So we'll wait for that letter and then hopefully come to the county council with the recommendation of how to respond to the letter. I don't think we should stay quiet, that's my opinion. Number five, resolutions, journey together, Ontario's commitment to reconciliation with indigenous peoples proposal. Resolution number SSCC 170961. Resolution number SSCC seventeen oh nine six one, moved by chair and seconded by committee. Whereas on February the twenty-second, twenty-seventeen, council authorized the county of Brentford to enter into an agreement with the Ministry of Education to receive twenty-five thousand dollars in capacity funding to participate in the Journey Together: Ontario's Commitment to Reconciliation with Indigenous Peoples, and to support, to support the development of proposals for expanded access for culturally relevant Indigenous-led early years programs, including childcare and child and family programs. And whereas on March the twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen, the county of Brentford entered into an agreement with Bonnashaw Galkam First Nation to partner with the county of Brentford to complete the need study and proposal regarding the viability of Indigenous early years and licensed childcare opportunities in the county of Brentford. Now therefore, county council endorses the submission of the Journey Together proposal to the Ministry of Education. Background information is there. Number six, Ontario Early Years Child and Family Centers Transition Plan. Resolution number SSCC seventeen oh nine six two, moved by chair and seconded by committee. That the Ontario Early Years Child and Family Centers Transition Plan be approved and submitted to the Ministry of Education. Background is there for you. Bylaws number seven, twenty-sixteen Social Infrastructure Funding Amending Agreement. Resolution number SSCC seventeen oh nine six zero, moved by chair and seconded by committee. That a bylaw be adopted authorizing the warden and clerk to enter into an amending agreement to participate in the twenty-eighteen nineteen program year for the twenty-sixteen Social Infrastructure Fund investment in affordable housing. And just to remind people, we're talking a slightly over a half million dollars. The determination as to what that money will be used for has not been decided at this point in time. Number eight, new childcare policy, childcare services resource staff procedures. Resolution number SSCC seventeen oh nine six three, moved by chair and seconded by committee. The county council approves the addition of policy CC-two-zero, childcare services resource staff procedures as amended to the childcare services policies and procedures, and that an amended bylaw fifty-eight oh nine be adopted at this session of the county council. All of which is respectfully submitted, signed by myself as chair, committee members Ema, Far, Kingsbury, Murphy, Ryan, Malgus, staff.
Thank you. And we'll go back to number one, item information about the waitlist statistics. Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just, I went back to the same chart from twenty-fifty, and also we're seeing the rate of change on the waitlist actually increasing. And I'm wondering, is that a function of perhaps a diminishing number of social housing units available, or is that a function of an increase to the families, individuals that are seeking social housing assistance?
Mr. Moro? If I may, Warden, through you to Counselor Dwyer. I don't believe it's an issue with respect to diminishing housing. That number has stayed static for the last number of years, I believe, between the county of Brentford and non-profits. The number remains around one thousand two hundred and seventy approximately, in terms of the amount of available housing, and that has been consistent for some time. Do we see in the private sector the numbers increasing? We have approximately eighty units that we provide rent supplement to, so that has remained fairly constant as well. I think it's a matter of what you said towards the end of your statement, and that is, the demand is increasing. And I think the private sector housing costs continue to rise, making it less affordable for other people out there to afford, so the alternative is, is to get put on the waitlist for either social housing or rent low-income housing.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah, just a follow-up, I mean, you know, certainly in this room, we are aware of the population growth, given the, just the release of the statistics that were gathered in twenty-sixteen, so our population isn't rising at the rate that, so it's not because of, the ratio isn't even keeping pace. There's a larger proportion of our population is needing this, and I just come to that because certainly your predecessor, Mr. Anderson, in that department, from time to time certainly acknowledged that the social housing was somewhat of a canary in a poll minor, a barometer, if you will, that we could use as getting a kind of an idea of what's going on in the community. So I think this is certainly front of mind to me, that increasingly we're seeing a requirement for assistance just for housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. If I can just add to that, the SIF funding that we talked about, just a half a million dollars or so, the committee has directed the staff to look into the possibility, perhaps looking towards the ministry to increase that funding, in particular if there's a service manager out there that can't use the funding many a lot of times, so we're hoping that that will be one of our options, which is very important to us.
I think the other suggestion that was made, if I may, now, Chair, is that perhaps this money would be better utilized, say, contributing to the repair policy that we have. It would go a lot further and perhaps keep people in their homes when they're able to apply for a new well or a new roof. I think that that certainly, you know, that half a million dollars would go a lot further than trying to build new units with it. So it was a, it was an idea that was launched at committee, so we'll see how that comes to fruition. Anything more I want? On number two, the childcare statistics. Number three, the OWU statistics. Number four, the social assistance modernization. Counselor Ema?
I'm glad to hear the provinces having some second thoughts, that's very, very hopeful. I did raise it with the AMO board, and I suspected it may have got to the memo on the standing table, because County Caucus and the Northern Caucus, I mean, were concerned once I brought it forward. I will bring it forward again this week, when I'm there to reiterate our concern, because the AMO staff took pretty extensive notes. I spoke for a couple minutes, and they seem to think there's some there, and what I was saying, I took the confidence of committee and paraphrased with it, so I'll do a reprise of that again this week, and we'll see, see if we can get a memo on the standing table as appropriate, or at the very minimum, a concern that they will call the new policy.
I appreciate that. I think that, you know, if, we've learned over the years that if we have a problem with it, most likely other people have a problem with it, so let's hope that we can get that across to the province. Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to comment, I certainly understand and endorse, but accessibility has kind of come to have a very specific definition. But I view this and many similar kind of initiatives, almost from an accessibility perspective, from the continuity of care perspective, that we've identified certainly across some of the outreach in home care services within the long-term care homes, that these initiatives often seem driven from an administrative efficiency perspective, rather than identifying the customer, client, if you will. It's, what I have come to, I identify with some particular initiatives, even though I endorse the patients-first initiative as we rolled out on the healthcare side of things in the province, I have some very significant issues that in a lot of instances, it doesn't seem to be the patient that it is focusing on likewise. These sorts of issues strongly suggest to me that the beneficiary is the administration of the system, rather than achieving the goals of what this is meant to do.
And yes, Mr. Moro?
Thank you. I just want to be clear about the two sides of the argument that are being debated here, so council is aware of how this province is positioned. Province's position on this is that if they are able to eliminate seventy-five to eighty percent of the administrative items, what it allows them is to better utilize their resources to deal with the clients on specific challenges and matters that they have. The challenge with our side of the discussion for, that we have, is that many of those administrative discussions we have with our clients lead to those high-value conversations. So it's the door that opens, because when is my check coming? How much is my check? And then the caseworker starts to have the conversation. So how is everything else going? What are your issues with housing? What are your issues with employment? What can we, you know, who can we refer you to in terms of getting the right services you need? And that has now become the nature of our businesses, working with the clients and our caseworkers to refer people. So there's two sides to this debate that are very clear. We're saying that, you know, we have those conversations with staff about the checks, and about the amounts of the checks, and that leads to other high-value conversations. And the other side of the argument is, we get rid of the administration, it frees up staff to have the high-value conversations. So I just wanted to make sure that there was that understanding of the debate that's occurring.
Counselor Ema?
Actually, I agree fully with Mr. Moro, and I would add that in terms of the province, we often suggest that they need to get leaner, they need to do things better, they need, you know, embrace technology. So what may be happening in the background is that they're trying to use a uniform approach to assess people, because then using a template with a series of forty-five questions or thirty-seven questions, or whatever the magic number is this month, they check those off, an aggregate score that streams the person into a treatment venue or style, or, and then that's seen as inefficiency. However, as we noted in the past, a lot of our folks are proficient with technologies they could be, they also may not have access to high-speed broadband, and they may be intimidated by talking to a faceless person on the other end of the line, or whatever. And so it's, I understand what they're trying to do, and I applaud it to a degree. However, I think in this instance, when you're dealing with extremely vulnerable people who may not even be able to accurately portray what their needs are, that Mr. Moro was quite correct, we need that face-to-face contact, and our clientele needs it, and not just our clientele, Brentford County, our clientele needs to speak with Bonnam and the French organization in northern Ontario, they recognize the value of it, and we're somewhat caught by surprise that this is what, this could mean, they would lose a, you know, valuable assessment tool or assessment capacity within their organization. So kudos to the Department of Health identify and correct in what the issues are addressing for.
Thank you, Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you very much. And I certainly, thank you very much to Mr. Moro for that comment. I certainly wanted to acknowledge those efforts, and I think that what you're describing also is, there's a, it's probably an incorrect word, diagnostic assessment, whatever, when someone presents, you know, when I phone up, and they ask me what my issue is, and give me nine selections, it's going to address that one period. And it doesn't have the capacity to have a relationship with, it has the capacity simply to address a particular issue on a particular day. So that's what I'm suggesting when I say that sometimes the efficiencies, the definition of efficient is the most difficult thing to arrive at.
Anything further on four? Moving on to resolutions, number five. Any comments, concerns, questions? Counselor Ema?
For me, this is a great document, but I have to admit, a surprise, the data, the sentence, the paragraph, data derived, in the case here, is something about indigenous offices, or people residing in the county of Brentford, and there are twelve hundred children between ages of zero and nine. And so that, I think, was probably the greatest of my, greatest surprise for me. I'm not sure this data has ever generated previously, or if it has, then I apologize for missing it. But I think that's a pretty significant, a pretty significant indicator of a group of residents in our community that, you know, we should be recognizing more and more in terms of serving at any level, not just social services. So that was quite my opener.
I agree. Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed if any? It's carried. And we'll move on to resolution for the early years child and family centers. Any comments, concerns, questions? Counselor Dwyer.
Just a question, is this one hundred percent funded from the province, or is there anything that's been formed?
No, that, it's, it's a hundred percent. That half million is coming from the province. Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed if any? Number seven, the social infrastructure fund. Comments? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed if any? Number eight, the new childcare policy. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed if any? The report is a hole. Can I get a mover, please? Thank you. All those in favor? Excellent, and I'll move on to finance and admin. Counselor Staff, please.
Thank you, Warden. We, your Finance Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Number one is the summary of council remuneration. Two is two thousand seventeen tax rate summaries. Three is two thousand seventeen taxable L levy by levy type. Number four, two thousand seventeen levy summary report. Five, two thousand seventeen tax impact summary report. Boy, I don't know, I think this is the last time Jeff this year would go through all these things. The year's almost over. Number six is Bill one forty-eight, Fair Workplace Benefit Act. And our committee has directed the county staff to prepare a letter of their warden's signature in support of the AMO submission on this, and that county staff also provides local examples of specific issues that apply to Brentford County where they do it as well. Number seven is the annual awards banquet Thursday, October twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Try and get yourself out to that, it's an important event. Number eight is the recognition of Public Holiday Remembrance Day, which November eleventh will be recognized on the Monday, the thirteenth, as it falls on Saturday. Number nine, resolutions. Resolution number FA-CC seventeen oh nine nine three, moved by chair and second committee. The county council approved the financial targets for annual budget process. Be brought forward to committee and county council, be approved on an annual basis. Second resolution number FA-CC seventeen oh nine nine five, moved by chair and second committee. The county council approved the two thousand eighteen budget guidelines as follows. Projected annual levy increase to three percent plus current value assessment weighted growth. A restriction in the use of levy increased to only two and a half percent per year for operating expenses, and new debt issued for projects in excess of three million dollars. And further, that the cost of the equal for non-union staff under employment, bylaw number one, be set at two percent in two thousand and eighteen. And that, to tell you, there was a fair bit of discussion at F and A on that, and may well be some today as well, but committee's position was to put this forward and really the, the discussion and change in direction, whatever, should be discussed and decided at the Budget Workshop Day in January, and in terms of whether we want to review the last few years and look at those guidelines. Bylaws number ten is the employment bylaw number one, resolution number FA-CC seventeen oh nine nine seven, moved by chair, seconded by committee. All changes be incorporated into the employment bylaw number one of the staff qualifications and salary range grid. A, the manager of child services position be removed from group nine. B, the project engineering position be removed from group nine. C, changes, change of position title of information coordinator to information and research coordinator in group four. D, removal of all of the titles administrative lead and childcare from group three, and the integrated coordinator lead and from group four. E, the financial services officer position be removed from group eleven. And further, that revised employment bylaw be adopted at this session of county council. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself, as chair, and committee members Don Castor, Dunlop, Murphy, Pecat, Robertson, Sweden, Miss Nessie Moore.
Thank you. And we'll go back to number one, our remuneration. The twenty seventeen tax rate summary. Does anybody want Mr. Foss to do that presentation again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. He puts the fun in funding. Number three, the tax, that's right, let's take notice, we stick together. The twenty seventeen PIL levy. Number seventeen, the levy summary report. Cinemaking reading. Number five, the tax impact summary report. Number six, Bill one forty-eight. I just want to- I just want to extrapolate on what Chair Stack said. The other thing in this report that you've probably read is that at AMO, Minister Flynn did publicly recognize that the thirty-six-hour call-in shift rule would not work for rural snowplow operators and fire departments. So we were going to make sure that that is part of the letter that, you know, we were encouraged that the minister recognized that in a public fashion. Number seven, the annual service banquet awards banquet. I hope everybody can make it to that. Remembrance Day. The resolution, I'll do these one at a time. The first one, that we approve the financial targets for the annual budget process. I will ask all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And I'll move to the second one, the three percent and the rules that we've been following for the last few years. As Chair Stack said, we did have some lively discussion about this and whether or not we wanted to reduce the percentage. It's my contention, and many of the Finance and Admin Committee agreed, was that it will be up to these chambers to make reductions where we see that they're necessary, and that we do not want to leave ourselves short for our capital asset management plan and our long-term planning. So that's something that we will review as a, as a council in January at our budget deliberations. Is there anything further on that? I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? I know one is opposed. Bylaws, the employment bylaw number one? Any discussion, concerns? All the, oh, Councilor Emo.
Thank you, Morden. I was just wondering if it was talked about the managers of the different areas being removed from groups, various groups. What groups were they being moved into?
Thank you, Morden. Yeah, it was absolutely administrative. Over the years, a number of changes have been made. What hadn't happened to that bylaw was, as council had made changes over the years, positions had actually moved, but we had never made the change in the document itself. So it was a cleanup of those past changes that had occurred. So I'll leave it at that. There was no change in salary or level that wasn't, that had not already been approved by council.
Exactly. Thank you. So all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Okay, the report is a whole. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Okay. Oh, sorry. Can I get a mover, please? Sorry. Sorry. It's been a long day now. Okay. Yeah, all those in favor? I make a mistake every county council. What are you going to do?
Did you correspond?
I did do correspondence.
I heard it was rumored it was a prophecy or something.
All right. Who has the bylaws?
Why are you making fun of me?
No. We thought we had the county service manager who were drinking water. That's what we're afraid of.
I'll move by myself. Second by Councilor Card, the bylaws. This is item thirteen, Actuar two, Schedule eight, the county of council agenda dated September twenty-seventh, 2017, be deemed direct three times in pass.
Thank you. The resolution in front of you. All those, any comments, questions, concerns about bylaws? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Seeing none? Thank you. We'll move on to notice as a motion. Seeing none? Members written motions. Councilor Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did advise council last, I think, at the August meeting that I would be bringing forward a resolution, but ultimately, the discussion began back in June. So I have now, in front of me, moved by myself, seconded, excuse me, moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Emo. Whereas at the seventh ordinary session of the council of the county of Redford held June twenty-eighth, 2017, council did endorse Canada's motion in support of the Paris Climate Accord. And whereas Canada has pledged to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to thirty percent below two thousand five levels by 2030. And whereas this is expected to limit global temperature growth to two degrees Celsius above pre-industrial revolution levels by twenty-one hundred. And whereas this two degrees Celsius is the point above which ice caps are expected to begin irreversible melting. And whereas meeting this target will require concerted individual and collective effort. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Development and Property Committee is directed to coordinate development of a comprehensive plan for the municipal corporation of the county of Redford to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in contribution toward this goal. And further, that the plan be presented to county council for approval in the spring of 2018.
Thank you. You've heard the resolution or the motion? Any comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Morrow, did you want to speak to this? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Sweet.
Yeah, further to that motion, I just want to make council aware of the fact that, in fact, we do have a management plan for all facilities that was initiated in 2013. We also have a green energy group that meet on a regular basis to review all of the various issues pertaining to climate change and the environment. And that plan is in fact updated annually. So it is part of the Development and Property Group going forward. And I don't have a problem asking our group to come forward and give you an overview of what has been done since 2013 to reduce the footprint walking lightly on the environment, so to speak, for this particular motion. That's in place at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Morden. Through you to Councilor Dwyer. With respect to the comments from Mayor Sweet, there is a green, a green energy plan in place through the Green Operations and Asset Management Committee. There was a new updated terms of reference that came to committee, I believe in 2012, that reflected changes to the terms of reference for what used to be just the Green Operations Committee. And that committee was, that terms of reference was amended to include the asset management. Typically, we had, the committee in past years, with an update on the Green Operations Department. With respect to the, the update and renewal that Councilor Sweet refers to, that's an obligation through our LAS requirements. So when we do put those energy efficiencies in place, for us to get those rebates, we continue to submit that information through to the LAS folks. So there is something in place. But if, so I guess with respect to your motion, there, you know, we're happy to update it or provide additional information, or put the specific references in it to climate change. I, you know, if memory serves me correct, the climate change piece may not be specifically referenced in some of those earlier documents. It's more reflective of energy conservation and reduction of costs. So, Morden, I'll leave it. That's okay?
Thank you. So I suppose what I would ask, oh, Mayor Emo, or Councilor Emo has something. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think the motion, you know, I think will help develop a benchmark, and as Mr. Morrow was suggesting, that there may need to be a language renewal in the, in the present, in the present structure. And I, you know, I would suggest that this motion brings that front and center. And also, it's a motion that, over time, will guide more decisions or more recommendations that council accepts for, goes forward. So I was, you know, notwithstanding what's been said, this, this simply reinforces the work of the county. And I think it's a motion that, you know, should stand and test the time.
Thank you. And I certainly see where the addition of those parameters in your motion would certainly help within the framework of the, of the work that we already have in place. Is there anything further? Councilor Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm, perhaps I've seen this, I don't recall, but I'm wondering if, even what exists besides perhaps addressing how to, to become more energy efficient, et cetera, has there been targets even of other steps? Have we investigated alternative sources of fuel to heat our buildings? Have we investigated alternative vehicles and different fuels that we may have in vehicles of? Maybe that is entirely within this, but it is specifically working towards the tonnage reduction in greenhouse gases that is required of the Paris Climate Accord, and of course, the Canadian contribution. That specifically is, is what kind of tonnage can the corporation of the county of Redford contribute towards that?
Thank you for that. Anything further? Councilor Sweet?
Thank you. Yeah, we'd be pleased to bring that forward. There have been advances and changes in certain areas in terms of public works, as far as the vehicles are concerned and paramedics. Paramedics as well, slow, slower panels at Bonnershire Manor, for example, to reduce costs, et cetera. But if, if there's a desire, we can bring forward a complete list of what has happened over the years, and perhaps put in place some of the initiatives going forward. The paramedics' ambulance, for example, are now running on clean diesel-type fuel, which before was not. It was on gasoline, et cetera. So that's an example. But along with all of the trees that we planted as well, which helps the reduction of CO2s, as you recall, we were recognized as a small community for the amount of trees that have been planted and congratulating for that movement going forward. So there have been initiatives, initiatives that perhaps we haven't been as diligent of putting down on paper or capturing under one heading type of you. And so maybe that would be important to bring that forward for the benefit of all members that have, have council. And we would be pleased to put that together.
Thank you. Anything further? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Seeing none? Excellent. Any new business? Nobody? Okay, well, despite my, my errors and my bumbling today, it is my intention to run for Morden for the 2018 year. So I just wanted, I know that people have been asking, so don't roll your eyes at me, Sweet. People have, you get an announcement? People have been asking, and so I thought I should put it out there that it is my intention to run again. Thank you. These after lunchtime meetings, they just go downhill quickly, eh? All right. Now, we do have another closed meeting. So I need a mover and a seconder to go into proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board.